Good afternoon, evening, everybody. It has been a minute. I am very excited to get back on here with you guys. We are having a little bit of difficulty getting Mr. Gonzalez logged in. He's doing that right now, but I figured we can jump in and, you know, get my introductions out of the way. If you got my invite, you probably know me already. I'm Benjamin Ficker with Equity Pacific Real Estate. And I think he, oh, Mr. Gonzalez is here now. If you want to get that webcam on, great. If you want to stay off screen or off camera, that's just fine too, Mr. Gonzalez. What we're doing right now is just going through my quick introduction. Hey, there he is. How are you?
I'm doing well. Can you hear me okay? We had Teams and Zoom going on this computer all day, so I'm switching from my one application to another.
I know. This is literally the last one I'm doing with GoTo, meaning the rest are going to Zoom, because that's what everybody else knows how to use.
Got it.
So, thank you so much for taking the time out of your evening to do this. I know you're, you're very busy with everything you've got going on, but let's, let's just jump right into it. So, quickly, here's the agenda for today. We're going to do quick introductions. I've talked with a lot of landlords and we've found the three key issues landlords are dealing with. Landlord representation at City Council, homelessness, crime issues, the available supply, how difficult it is to develop new apartments. And just have you give your thoughts on those when we get there, and then any final thoughts you have, and then you can feel free to jump off if you've got stuff to do, and I'll do my quick market update and go from there. So, if you don't know me, I've been doing this for, since 2004, real estate, or multifamily specifically, since 2015. Beautiful wife since 2017. There's my wonderful kid since 2019, and my beautiful daughter since this last March. She's a lot of fun. I had the pleasure, and nobody's here to listen to me, they all want to hear what you've got to say. So, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Gonzalez back in the spring when we were doing candidate interviews with PMAR. And you really impressed me with your vision, pragmatism, and leadership, and where you want to take this city. And, and I feel like we've been missing that from our local leaders a lot. So, that's why I wanted to reach out and have you do this for, for the people that I, that I work with. You are running for a seat on City Council, currently held by Joanne Hardisty, and I strongly believe that what we need is an upgrade in this position. As how, as local housing providers, everybody on this webinar has felt the effects that this position has had on themselves and on their business, and we are looking forward to, to some changes. So, anything you want to throw in there about your little introduction for yourself?
Um, you know, I feel free to check out my website and background and policy objectives. You know, fundamentally, I come from the private sector, pretty deep connection to the real estate industry, starting my career at Stor Reeves as a real estate finance lawyer there, and then was in-house for a number of years in both real estate, corporate, and finance legal role. And so, I'm not a rookie on many of the issues confronting you, was a small landlord for a while as well, and have seen it as a legal advisor for both small mom and pops and big real estate developers, really primarily on the corporate side, but also a bit on the pure developer side. So, I'm looking forward to the dialogue. I can give you a high level on how the campaign's going.
I would love that. I just want to throw one thing out real quick. I started to make a slide that showed all your endorsements, and I thought, that's just too many. I gotta, I gotta just go to the website, because we get all of these multifamily Northwest, Home Builders Association, Smart Growth, everything related to real estate is eager to have you in this position. So, we're excited to have you, and please tell me about the campaign, tell me where you're at, and, and give your thoughts.
While we're on endorsements, if you scrolled up there, I could just call a couple other Benjamin for the, for the group. We've been really excited about support from the trades, Columbia Pacific Building, Teamsters, you know, Ironworkers, IBW also all came on board this summer to support our race. So, it's been fascinating watching the way the business community and really the trades have united behind our campaign. And it's, I did not come from a labor background whatsoever. I, and it's really been positive to see the emergence of their support, their concern about a lot of the same issues that landlords are, and that families are, and the business community is, public safety for their workers. They're very, very focused on the flow of capital into the city. So, it's just, it's, it's, it's just a fascinating dynamic. I'm not surprised I have support in the business community. I certainly welcome it, deeply appreciate it. But the support of the trades has been really gratifying, and public safety obviously as well, Portland Police, Portland Fire, Teamsters has a big EMS component of their union. So, that's been great to see emerge. And then, last but not least, if folks saw the Oregonian poll that was released this week, right now we're showing about a 25% lead. You know, there's a lot of work to be done, so there's no resting on our laurels, but one of the fascinating parts of that, about that result is we're winning nine to one east of 205. And it's, it's real easy to label my candidacy as being just a business, you know, candidacy, but the same issues that are affecting you all, the business community more broadly, is affecting everyday residents. And so, it's just gratifying to see that level of broad support, and we feel good about where we're at, and it's just a matter of finishing strong over the next 25-plus days.
Perfect. Well, we'll, we'll do what we can to, to help out there. So, let's talk about the three issues that, this is stuff that, I make a lot of phone calls to landlords, people are probably annoyed at me calling all the time, but I need to know what we're dealing with. And these are just some of the quotes that we, that I've, that I've heard. City of Portland is anti-landlord. Nobody is taking us into account. The actions of the City Council are having the exact opposite effect as intended. Obviously, we've gone through a few years where there's a very loud group that was driving policy. The homelessness and crime is, is an obvious one. People told me it's the reason they're getting out of Portland. We helped somebody unload their entire portfolio last year because of issues around there. Scaring away good tenants, safety concerns we haven't had in 40 years. And then lastly, you know, there's, there's a lot of supply and demand, and I don't think anybody here is a big fan of gouging tenants, but we will keep up with market demands, and if, if we don't have enough supply, prices go up, right? So, it's extremely expensive to build in Portland, not just the fees, but the time it takes to start the process to get to the end. Anyway, so let's, let's, let's just start, start, let's just start with the landlord representation stuff. Like, how do you feel the makeup of the city, of the City Council could better, I'm not saying give landlords everything they want, but just, just at least make us feel heard. What's, what's some stuff that we could look forward to?
Well, I think, you know, you're, both Joanne and Chloe before, we're certainly coming at policy at the City Council level with the, at times a very anti-landlord tone, and assumption of guilt there before really analyzing the issues. And so, um, you know, Chloe's been replaced, and I replaced Joanne, and you sort of extracted that portion of City Council, and I think there's going to be a pretty balanced perspective sitting on City Council for, going forward in, in 2023. So, those are, I mean, look, we're not going to give you everything you want, but we're going to listen, and we understand the macro, we understand what happens when capital flies, and it's, and we certainly understand about, I mean, at least I appreciate unintended consequences. I mean, you know, some of the tenant protections make it harder for you all to take risk on tenants. It's so difficult. It was already hard to get rid of a bad tenant, and we've done nothing in the last six years to make that easier in the city of Portland. And it, so I hear that from landlords, and take it to heart. So, it's, you know, I'd like to really look at anything that Chloe pushed during her tenure that got adopted. What, what are, what are things that we want to keep? What are things that maybe need some real tweaking to get the equities in the process really more balanced, but more fundamentally that are, eliminate some of the unintended consequences? And if we're creating distance centers for landlords to rent to certain types of tenants or higher-risk tenants, we really need to think about what we can do to unwind that, right? And it, it, so I think that you guys may be getting the best political news you had in years with this composition, this City Council. You know, again, it doesn't mean that's just going to be a flip a switch, and we fix all the things that, you know, we wouldn't do again right now. And I'm sure it's going to be that simple, but I do think you're going to have a City Council that's going to listen, and, you know, if you can bring, bring in the data in, I think we'll drive a decision-making with that.
That's great. I'm going to skip over to the, to the, the development stuff for a second, because I think we've got more to talk about for homeless and crime than we do the development stuff. So, it's tough to build in Portland, right? We, we know that inventory levels are really low for available rentals. We see cranes happening and developing, but everything has slowed way down over the last, over the last little bit. What do you see as a solution, or what do you see as steps we can take in the right direction to actually, you know, there's an article, one of the, one of the big bonds that was passed, and they were going to build some affordable housing. The first project got done and it cost $430,000 a door for affordable housing, which is just, you know, you should be building two or three times as many units that way, right? So, but what, what do you see as steps we can take to actually get more housing available out there for people?
I think we start with, let's look, take a hard look at inclusionary zoning. You know, it's got largely a stick, and there's some, can we tweak it with some more carrots? Seattle, as I understand it, looked at similar dynamics and went a little bit more carrot-oriented. And it's really focused on your multifamily, obviously, there, but it is, I think we just need to rethink it, and, and can it be a combination of sticks and carrots? Right now, it's entirely a stick, you get above the 19. You've got to include some segment of affordable in that mix, and we're seeing too many projects come in at 19 units and just not happen. So, it's, I think that's a start, you know, that's, it's, that's some pretty straightforward math that we can kind of play through and see what that's going to drive in units coming online. Obviously, the permitting process in the city of Portland is really problematic, it's incredibly slow. I don't know by any measure do we do well in that regard, even in the metro area. I hear that from Anglo, I hear that from Latino contractors, how brutal the process is in the city of Portland, just from a timing perspective, even before you get to fees. And so, there is, I mean, many of you know there is a task force going on right now under Dan Ryan's office. Since they started the task force, I've heard the mix. So, on the one hand, permits aren't going to the process any faster since they started the task force there. In some ways, data is going backwards, at least temporarily, in terms of, you know, start to finish in that process. But I, there's a silver learning. I haven't seen the specifics, but I've heard some, you know, some confidence that they've identified areas that they, they think that can really, over the long haul, improve that process. I haven't seen the nitty-gritty of what that looks like, Benjamin, but listening to the folks close to it, there's some degree of optimism. I'd like to put on the table at some point again, the concept of concierge service. I think some of your folks mentioned it in one of our groups, I've been playing with that a little bit, and I'm intrigued about bringing that back online. Certainly, having the permitting team work from home has not been ideal, you know, I mean, it's, I remember dealing with permits in the city of Portland and being able to walk in downtown, didn't mean you got the answer you wanted, didn't mean it was easy, but there was a value in being able to see someone eye-to-eye and bring out your plans and, you know, walk through what, and I, you know, that was me just doing my own little projects, not necessarily on a more complex, sophisticated development, but having that access and in-person, I do think it matters, and I think we're going to put, I think there will be some push to get those folks back in the office sooner than later, at least a component of that team, so you have a, some of that outreach. And I'd start with some of those pieces, you know, I, I do, and I may have mentioned when I was with your Governance Committee, I'm a big guy on tracking, you know, let's talk about our goals and track against that, and no one can look at the number of units coming online in the city of Portland right now and conclude that that is anywhere near sufficient. And I think we, we broadcast that every single day, we keep that front and center, that's everywhere inside the bureaucracy, as well as folks that are driving policy, and we just collectively keep that data out in front of us, we keep piping it to the press, because it just, we cannot let go of that reality. And part of it may be beating up Metro too, but that's a whole different story on urban growth boundary and what we're doing to bring stock online more generally in the metro. The city by itself cannot address all of the supply issues for the metro area. It's just, that's broader, and we need other partners on there, but the things we can control, inclusionary zoning, our permitting process, I put right at the top of the list. Let's get rid of some of the more subjective elements of design review to the extent we can, to give investors some predictability, to give builders some predictability. There's always going to be some subjective components, but hopefully that's not City Council members at the last minute trying to, you know, relay out an apartment building and what it should look like. So, I'd start with some of those pieces, and just keep those numbers front and center.
I love it. I love it. That's the, that's the pragmatism, I like, set the goals and track against them, like, I feel like the last six years has been a lot of blue-sky thinking and no, nothing to measure against, it's just, this is what we're going to do, but there's no steps to get it done, right? So, the big one is homelessness and crime. I've got a buddy who moved to St. John's, he was there, brand-new apartment building, he was there for about a month before the camp took over right in front of his building. He's like, I just, I gotta go. So, he, he left then and moved out to the coast for a bit until things cool off down here. So, it, you know, I've got, I've got a triplex that we're trying to sell right now that should work, except for the homeless camp a block and a half down the street, and it's, you know, when the first time I pulled up there, people just came and stood right by my car and watched me as I got out and walked over to, you know, and I'm, I'm six foot two twenty, you know, not a lot intimidates me, three people intimidate me, but if I was, you know, any other real estate broker in there that, I wouldn't want to go show that property. So, where, where do you think we're, you know, on a scale of one to 10, where do you think we're at now, and where do you think we can go from here, and what do you think we should do to get there?
Well, I mean, certainly the sense of chaos in the city, the, the lack of feeling of safety, the reality of lack of safety, the absence of any cleanliness in substantial parts of the city, I mean, it's the worst of my adult lifetime. And even in, you look at, you know, portions of the city, even like downtown, that doesn't quite feel like Mad Max as it did a year ago, but it's still not clean, there's still a painful amount of real crime going on, everything from homicides to vandalization, much less, you know, car thefts and catalytic converter thefts. This is the worst of my adult lifetime, and I think we have to, I think most Portlanders, I'm a Generation X, I think most of us that age or younger will have a shared perspective that it has never been this bad, at least since we've been grownups. You know, you have moments fear for your spouse, for the seniors down the street, for your children, are they, are they safe on our streets right now? And the answer is no. And so, it's bad, and I think we have to confront that directly. You know, what we do about it is the next natural piece, and to ask, and some of it's returning fully to life as best we can, you know, get economic activity, get social activity, get the things that connect Portlanders as fully commit to re-embracing those things is, is something we all have to kind of do, hold hands and do. I was hoping that downtown would have recovered more organically over the last year than it has, it just, it hasn't. I mean, despite being much, much feeling cleaner than it did a year, it's still not snapping back. And, but I think part of that's just the, the spirit of a city and committing to go in and living again. But obviously, we need to invest in public safety officers, and that needs more police on our streets, and a commitment to provide justice to those that are, suffer a crime in the city. That's, I think we need to take off, you know, a relatively hard snap on that right now, and that's in our budget, and it's also just our whole approach to victims. Are we protecting them in the city of Portland? I don't think people are imagining the safety issues they're feeling. It's real, it's visceral, and we got to treat it as such.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it was actually a Facebook post you did, something like 82% of people polled want to see more police presence.
I saw that today.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm not a fan of the negative stories that come out, like, bad stuff does happen, and I've seen some really incredible empathic interactions with police officers where it could have been one way, and they just handled it with such grace and dignity that, like, I was, I was blown, it was like right when the George Floyd stuff was happening, and I saw this mentally challenged woman get into a fight with her mother, and the police that showed up could have easily thrown her to the ground and then, you know, done the thing. And instead, they got her laughing and got her, got her into an ambulance and got her to the hospital and made sure she was okay, and I was like, just, it was just such a stark difference from the narrative that's being shouted, right? And anyway, I, I look forward to the, you know, I used to live down at the Honeyman Hardware Lawson, 9th and Gleason, and I would walk over to Dante's on a Friday night at 11 o'clock when I was, you know, 25 years old. Never had, never had a question, and now I'm like, I'm not, I'm not doing that now. So, I, I look forward to the days of old Portland, right? Not just from a nostalgic standpoint, but just, I love this city, I, I want to see it skip right back on, back on the right track. So, you know, along the lines of the, of the people being like the re-offenders, people who've been arrested for the catalytic converters 10 times, or there, I saw some guy who'd been, I think it was street racing for like, he'd been arrested five times, then he was involved in that crash that just happened that killed somebody, like, what, is, is that something that's going to fall more into the, is that something that, that is under the city of Portland that, I assume that would be more of the DA, the district attorney?
Yeah. But... There's some potential intersections with the city, and there are some elements that we're really looking at in terms of what can the city do to re-establish agency on crime? Now, obviously, funding for police, that's direct connection to the City Council, and we put that in one bucket, making sure adequately staffed there. But the police are only where the rubber hits the rope, and there are broader weaknesses in our criminal justice system in the metro area that need addressing. Some of those are absolutely in partnership with the county and to a certain extent the state, but there are some pieces that if the county's not going to get moving on, I do think the city can take the initiative. And so, very specifically, one of the solutions we're looking at is re-establishing a municipal court in the city of Portland. The city's not had one for nearly 50 years. There was an argument that there was more efficiency to consolidate the court systems here, which there's, there is an argument for that. However, when I look at the city of Portland where folks don't get justice for the broken windows, for the stolen vehicle, for the catalytic converters thefts, it's, it may be time for the city to take that back. We can prosecute misdemeanors there under state law, we can't prosecute felonies, but we can disrupt the cycle of criminality for a certain type of crime and/or a certain segment of crimes. And no, we can't put you in jail for more than a year, but misdemeanor, we'll end up charging you for that. You can face jail time of up to a year for some of those crimes. And we do think that there's a lot of those property crimes that are feeding an addiction substance, you know, someone suffering from substance use disorder. So, there's also an element that we intercede, we bring you through the criminal justice system, but you're trying to drive as much diversion as well, like, you know, we know that folks are stealing those catalytic converters to feed in addiction, they're going to do our best to, you know, get them in addiction services. Sometimes it's a hard message, it's either you're going to jail or you're going to addiction services. But one of the unintended consequences of Measure 110 is we have taken away any of the hard choices, you know, often for those who are engaging really negative behaviors that are driven by addiction, we have to wait until they so choose, you know, unilaterally to engage in addiction services. And I don't think that's working right now in our region. So, criminal justice system can have an unintended, you know, indirect positive impact on that. And so, I think a municipal court may be a component of that. Another thing that not many people have visibility to, there's a joint public safety coordinating organization called Elpsick, and that is, it's a product of state law, it requires every county and city and the local circuit court to work together to coordinate public safety in the region. And it impacts things like sentencing guidelines, bail requirements, and I, that's just an area where we have been pursuing, and I say we collectively, county, city, circuit court have been pursuing some really venerable social justice initiatives, but have forgotten about victims and the sense of justice in that process. And currently, Joanne R.C. is the city's representative on that committee, she co-chairs it with Deborah Cifori, and I think that's one where the city needs to insert itself, it has a right to be at the table, and currently it's a co-chair of that committee. It can be insisting on the concept of responding to victims' needs and responding to the fundamental need of justice in the city, and both of those have kind of been backburdened in a lot of the dialogue recently.
Oh, I, I hadn't heard about that at all, and I'd love to see where, where you can take that, that would be, that'd be wonderful. Well, you have been so generous with your time, I can't emphasize enough how much of an upgrade we need at this position, and I really think you're the one to do it. So, where I'm excited to go for you. And people listening, go to, go to ReneeForPortland.com. All the information for, for donations, for getting involved, for anything you can do to help support the, the campaign was right there. And yeah, just thank you again for your time, I really, really do appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for having me. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you too. Okay, that was, that was fun. Let's, let's get onto the nitty-gritty details of the market. What is happening in the market? If you've not been paying attention, which of course you guys have been, but if you have not been paying attention, we're in a different market than we were six months ago. Things have changed, so let's jump into it. One of the big projects I've been working on over this last summer is building out a very expansive database of comp, comp data. It's going to combine different data sources to, to get us the information that we need. In my opinion, it's probably going to be the best source of real-life data, boots-on-the-ground data we've got. So, let's talk about this. So, one thing I want to look at was inventory and absorption. So, this is going to be everything from two units all the way up to 100-plus unit properties. This, don't worry so much about the actual little numbers here, but it's just watching the trend, right? So, we've got, this is the beginning of the year on a weekly basis, you can see it's kind of going up, going up, up, up. This line down here is the percent that has sold in that same week, right? So, that's going to give us our, the absorption of that inventory. So, on average, four and a half percent of the total inventory is sold every week, that's, that's averaged over the last 12 weeks, right? When you, when you deal with properties like, you know, that just don't have a lot of, like, there's not a ton of 100-unit-plus properties on the market, so you've got to average it out over 12 weeks so that you kind of get a real number, otherwise one week will say 20%, the next week will say 0%. So, about four and a half percent is sold weekly over the last 12 weeks, that's quite a, quite a drop from, from previously. Three and a half, 3.75% of the inventory goes under contract weekly, right? So, there's your active properties, they go under contract or mark pending, and then they, then they're marked sold. So, this 3.75 would lead to the 4.5% that actually, that actually sells. So, this, these numbers are pulled from ArmolS and CoStar, CoStar Internet. Inventory by segment, this is where everything on the market... Inventory by segment, this is where everything on the market and under contract, this is how it's broken down. We've got most of the properties are duplex, triplex properties, makes sense. Fourplex properties uh, are here. Um, five to eight units, nine to twenty, twenty-one to fifty, fifty-one to a hundred. This is zero percent. That's the um, one hundred-plus unit properties that are, that are for sale. So there's actually one property actively listed for sale on the market. So one, once you get above fifty units, it gets, the numbers get a little wonky because often those properties aren't publicly advertised. So for example, there have been nineteen sales of properties over one hundred units in the Portland metro area, only one listed the entire year, right? So those other nineteen were sold and they were broke involved, they were at, they were, they were just not publicly advertised. They were advertised to like disposition lists and stuff like that. So um, just thought it was interesting as to kind of how the market is actually broken up. Um, price per unit. So this, this is the, this is interesting because of the way the market is shifting right now. Typically, if you're going to figure out the value of a property, you wanna look at the, the most recent solds um, of similar properties and then figure out, you know, where your, where yours falls in line, plus or minus, condition, et cetera, whatever. So we got this broken up by segment and um, this is the current active or under contract property. So if it's under contract, we don't know, you know, if somebody's offering it for two million and it's under contract for one point five, we don't know that. It'll, that'll reflect when it's sold, right? But if it's active at two million and goes pending, we just know it's pending at two million. We don't know the real price. So that's why you're gonna see some of these prices drop here. So the um, duplex, triplex properties, uh, the average asking price is two ninety-two. The average sales price, or sorry, this is per unit, price per unit, two ninety-two per unit versus two seventy-six per unit sold. Two fifty per unit for fourplexes, two thirty-three sold. Two twenty-six for five to eight units, two oh-nine for five to eight units. And you can see it's kind of starting to go back up here. Two thirty-seven uh, for the nine to twenty, but they sold at two sixteen. Two sixty-one uh, is the twenty-one to fifty and then two thirty-four. One ninety-three is the average price per unit for the um, fifty-one to a hundred and then the average sold is one eighty-four and some change. Um, so what I'm taking away from this, a, this, this segment, the duplex, triplex market, a lot of that is driven by owner occupants, a lot less now than it was and we'll talk about why in a second. Um, but if you have the opportunity for somebody to purchase and move into the property, they will pay more than somebody who's looking for straight return on investment. Fourplexes always do well because it's the last residential financing. Uh, it's the biggest unit count you can get with residential financing. After that, it goes to multifamily. This is where all the money is right now. This is, there's not a lot of inventory in this twenty-one to fifty, but that's where everybody from out of state wants to buy. If they're putting money in Portland, these deals all feel too small. So they want these deals here. That's what's driving these prices up. And once you get to this fifty-one to a hundred, um, there, there's just not, there's, A, there's just not that many for sale. So one massive listing or one massive sale is gonna completely skew the number. So take that with a grain of salt. Here's the cap rate. So there's some interesting data to talk about here with the cap rates, uh, that I'll get to in a second. The um, this is the sold cap rate. So for, so what we did is we, we pulled all the data from everything, active, everything sold. If they don't provide numbers, that's not counted in here, right? If they say the, you know, if they say there's fourplexes for sale and their, their annual gross income is zero, then we don't put that in here because we don't know what that cap rate would actually be. Or if their math is just completely off, right? Somebody said that um, some, somebody had in there, this is a listing today. They said their annual gross income was fifty-five thousand dollars. Expenses were thirty-five thousand dollars and the net was forty-two thousand dollars, right? So how does that math work? I don't know. We can't count that data because it's not good data. So um, but this is what's interesting, the, the ones that are currently active and under contract for duplexes, four point six one percent cap rate. The properties that sold had a slightly higher asking cap rate of four point seven two, but sold at four point eight four. Fourplexes sold at four point nine two, five to eight sold at five point two four. And then we're back down to under fives, uh, four point nine four, four point nine six, four point, four point five eight. Here's the interesting thing about this. So this is what has sold um, over the last ninety days. Um, now let's look at what has gone under contract in the last sixty days. Duplex, triplex, still the four point one six percent. The fourplexes that have gone under contract, four, five point four seven percent. That's, that is up eleven and a half percent from what sold, right? The five to eight units are up six and a half percent and nine to twenty units are up eighteen point six percent. So the thing, so next month and the month after that and the month after that, these numbers are going to be starting to look a lot bigger because those, those cap rates, the pending cap rates are quite a bit higher than the ones that sold. And where it goes pending, they're even gonna see a bigger dip to where it sells, right? So again, the lower the cap rate, the better, the, the higher the, the better the sales price for the seller. The higher the cap rate, the better deal is for the buyer. So when you think about going under contract and then someone negotiates repairs, et cetera, that cap rate is going to improve from the buyer's perspective. So that's when the, the cap rate creeps up. Um, that, that means it's a better deal for buyers as it increases. So if the pendings are going up already, now they're gonna renegotiate based on their, based on their repairs, et cetera, that, that's gonna creep up even higher. Um, I'll get to what we can do about this in a second. Inventory levels, the average new listings per week has dropped twenty-five percent since the beginning of the year. Now, ten years ago, uh, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, when, when we had our recession and the market, I'm not saying we're crashing, but when the market did crash back then, um, people were still forced to move, right? If you, if you got a divorce and your house was underwater, you had to sell, you did a short sale, people still did deals. The difference with multifamily is if any of you uh, lose, lost your job or moved or whatever, you don't necessarily have to sell your multifamily property. The average owner in my database has owned their property for seventeen years, meaning they've got some pretty good equity in there. They're not, and they've probably got a ridiculously low rate. They're not gonna sell it just to sell it. So what we're seeing is um, the new listings per week dropping because people aren't able to get the prices that they thought they could get last year, right? What's happening is that we're moving back to the fundamentals, right? Multifamily real estate is supposed to be valued based on the income streams it brings in. And for the last seven years, five years, it's been based on, on the pro forma. It's been based on what you could do with it. And that's not really, I mean, it's great for sellers, of course, but you've, you've been able to sell your properties um, for a price that the property didn't, wasn't actually earning, if that makes sense. Um, so that's changing. What's happening is we're, we're, we're seeing inventory shift because people are like, well, if I'm not gonna get the price I thought I was, I'm just gonna hold on to it, which might be the right move for you. Um, here, here's a big, here's the other big impact that, that we're seeing on the market or, or a lot of it's feeding into this stuff, uh, is interest rates. So interest rates on two to four unit properties, look at this beautiful seven point six percent. So that, this is just based on an average price, you know, if you remember, average price per unit for duplexes, three hundred. So we did six hundred, point, minimum twenty-five percent down. That's gonna be seven point six percent interest rate. I, I would be blown away if anybody here has an interest rate at that. If not, ha, you know, you should be at half that. Um, fifteen-year fixes are gone, so these are all thirty-year fixed and this is paying for two discount points, right? For, for unit properties, seven point six two five percent, two and a half discount points, thirty-year fixed. Now, cap rates are still gonna be what they are, but an investor's actual return on investment is really going to be affected by this, right? So we're gonna see, so it just, if you don't have the equation memorized, it's annual gross income minus operating expenses equals your net operating income. Net operating income divided by the sales price gets you a cap rate. Net operating income minus debt service, your principal and interest payments, that's your net operating cat, or that's, that's your, that's your cash flow, your pre-tax cash flow. That divided by your investment, your down payment uh, is, is gonna give you your actual return on your investment. So if you bought this thing cash, your return on investment's going to be the same as your cap rate. But if you've taken any financing out, then your, then those numbers are going to mathematically just be different. So you could still have a property that's a five and a half cap and is losing twenty thousand dollars a month. Or, oh, sorry, a year, that would be really bad if it's a month. Twenty thousand, twenty thousand bucks a year. We just did that when we were, when we were coming up with a, um, a property that was currently on the market. We're like, well, this just clearly doesn't work. Um, so this is something that you've got to take in, take into consideration. And what we're seeing right now is an increase in sellers opting to sell on contract uh, because now you can be the bank and get seven and a half percent on your money, right? Um, you can do, you know, we're, we're doing a deal right now. They're putting, they're putting forty percent down, ten-year balloon and uh, they're, they're making a real good amount of return on their cash. Doesn't make sense to necessarily carry a note when you're, when an interest rate's at three percent, but when they're, when they're up at seven and a half percent and you can lock that up for the next five years, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good position for carrying a note. Um, so it's, it's just getting, what, what, the difficulty in the market today isn't necessarily the, it's not, the big problem is you're not gonna get the price that you might have wanted to get a year ago because most of the people I talk to have not been raising their rents. The, well, actually, let's jump into the, to the, to the rest of the financing stuff first. So um, all this data came from uh, Mike Popno over at Neo Home Loans. Uh, he's the one who's done um, a lot of my own personal loans. Um, I refer a lot of people over to him. Um, there are non, uh, non-traditional financing out there based on the DSCR or uh, or a bank, based on the bank statements, um, but that's just gonna be a higher rate. But if you're in a position where you don't have steady income, that could be an option for you. Five plus units, uh, this came from Mike, so this is commercial financing. Got this from Michael Coffey, he's a capital advisor over, over at Stacksource, um, great guy. Uh, here's a little blurb he gave me. There is a collective conservatism taking over while the Fed does its misguided thing. There's still plenty of capital to be placed. Every lender's trying to figure out how to deploy it responsibly. That being said, for a multifamily deal over a million, he can still get five point nine percent on a seven-year fixed, thirty-year AM, up to seventy-five percent LTV. Most lenders are above six and a half now and LTVs are debt service constrained as a result. Um, that is great numbers. The, uh, those numbers are fantastic. The, the LOIs that we have coming in from lenders today for our deals are anywhere from six and a half to seven and a half percent. So if you're able to get it under six percent, that's, that's good, that's good position to be in in this market. Um, so here's what it means for all properties, whether it's two units or two hundred units, properties with low rents and no way of achieving close to market rents are having a really tough time in this market. If you've got a property where rents are half what they should be, you're going to have a tough time achieving that two hundred per door or three hundred per door, depending on the property. But if you're, if rents are supposed to be fifteen hundred and you're at thirteen hundred, you've got a path to get to that money pretty quick. Um, I'm sure you've all heard that the rent increases uh, for next year are fourteen point six percent. Um, something to keep in mind with that is the city of Portland has their soft cap at nine point nine percent and the state has their hard cap of fourteen point six percent. So if you own in the city of Portland and you give a notice to your tenants to raise their rents fourteen percent and they elect to move, you're gonna owe relocation funds. If you raise it nine point nine percent and they didn't elect to move, no relocation funds. Now, some of you have rents that are so low that you might incentivize them to move. Um, because even though you have to pay relocation, now you can sell a property or, or fill a property at a market level versus taking five, six, seven years of steady increases to get to market level rents. Um, it's a tough spot to be in, but if you've been on my webinars the last two years, there's one thing that I try to drive home every single time, it's get those rent increase notices out. It's been um, uh, we're, we're still coming up on properties where uh, you know, rents are at seven hundred and they should be fifteen. It just needs to, you just, you just gotta get those rents close to a market level. Um, so numbers have to pencil. Uh, you gotta have a one and a quarter DSCR debt service coverage ratio on real numbers. Anything this side of two, west of two oh five, um, if we're not priced at a five and a half cap on real numbers, it's probably gonna be a waste of your time unless there's a huge value add opportunity, right? If it's just a complete gut job, then obviously you can, you can price it where there's gonna be a floor somewhere. Um, but you've really gotta be, you've really gotta have some meat on the bone for the buyer coming in for the, for these things to make sense. Um, and we're saying three percent cash on cash, three plus percent cash on cash on, on actual real numbers. So final thoughts and action items. Um, fourteen point six percent for twenty twenty-three, you've gotta raise your rents. Get your notices out now. If you work on them now, you get them out by November first. You've got all of November, December, January, February first, you're getting that rent increase. And that's not, again, to gouge your tenants. It's because of the equity that you're losing by having under-market rents. As we get back to fundamentals, lenders are going to take a look at the actual numbers a lot more closely than they were and um, we just can't, we can't look for those new, you know, if you're going to refinance, if you got a commercial loan, those are five, seven, ten-year deals. Um, if those notes are coming due and your, and your rents aren't close to market, you're gonna have, you, how are you going to refinance? If you're at a four percent, now you gotta refinance into an eight and your rents are still too low. There's not, you're not gonna get, you probably can't refinance to even pay off the loan you have. So um, we're in a difficult spot moving forward, but what I want for everybody, I don't wanna sound all, all doom and gloom, there's still deals happening. There's plenty of deals happening, it's still at prices that are great for sellers, just not what they were a year ago, right? So everybody needs to be taking action to get their properties back in line with, with what the market's saying. And that means getting your rents out, getting your maintenance done, making sure your tenants are taken care of, making sure those, you know, broken furnaces are taken care of. And um, you know, get all, get all your decks in a row. This is, this is the time to do it, especially if this market is pushing you out of making moves and into holding a little longer, you need to set yourself up over the next two, three years. Now, for some of you, you might, still might want to be doing a deal in the next year. What can you do or why would you even want to do that? If prices are gonna come down, which mathematically they will be if people don't have their rents up, if prices do start coming down, it still may make sense to sell if you're moving to a market that is that much better, right? If you can sell at a six or seven cap here and buy at a ten cap in another location, then even though you're not getting what you want here, you're getting more than what you are trading for there, right? So there's still time, there's still opportunities to do that. And there will be, uh, there will be an opportunity to refinance, right? We're not, we're not gonna be at, at seven percent forever, right? Those numbers will change. So um, that, that's what I got for you guys. Oh, oh, uh, last thing, this is just a very small snippet of our full market update. In November, uh, we are gonna do a market update with Dan Hayes from Real Property Management. I wanna get the lenders on, I wanna get people on who are um, uh, you know, have boots on the ground the way that I do and can tell you what's happening in their world um, around the market. So um, this is the website, tinyurl.com/pdxmarket. Um, that is for our webinar in November. Everyone here will get a, um, will get a, a, a email invite to that as well. If you have any questions in the meantime, or if you have anything for me, uh, you want me to ask or answer, um, please feel free to reach out. I so appreciate you guys taking the time out on a Thursday evening, uh, probably missing dinner uh, to listen to me blabber for a bit. Uh, probably missing dinner, uh, to listen to me blabber for a bit. Um, I really do appreciate it. Again, I try not to be too pushy in what we do. Uh, but all I ask is that, um, you know, we want to provide enough value so that when the time comes to have a discussion about your real estate plans, that you at least give me a call and we can discuss it. Um, anyway, thank you so much for everything. I appreciate you guys jumping on board and, um, we'll talk to you guys soon. All right. Thanks so much.